Welcome everyone to the October 28th Watership Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We have the agenda and meeting minutes up, and I believe everyone should have got the meeting minutes. So please take a look at the agenda and meeting minutes and I will call for an approval or well, call for modifications to the agenda or the meeting minutes. And if there are none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve as presented.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pent. Hearing no corrections or changes requested, I move that we accept the minutes and the agenda as published.
All right, do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, a second.
I will do roll Commissioners, Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Thill.
Yeah, I'm staying.
Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, and whoever has screen control, can you roll me back to the top? I do not have the agenda open. I will open it as soon as we get rolling here on another computer. But as we get started, I'll need to see it. Thank you. Um, all right, so then next up, it looks like we have our WMO report from Vanessa. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just got a few updates. Ryan and Melissa both have quite a few themselves. A few updates on a couple of things. A couple of months back, I mentioned that we are working on a kind of a joint endeavor with Dakota and Washington County for an MDH grant for cyanogen testing in local wells. It's a pesticide mitigation grant. Basically, MDA reached out, Department of Health reached out to all three counties to see if they could kind of do some real targeted efforts to both test and provide water treatment for private wells that might test high in cyanogen. Now, there are only about a handful, you know, less than probably about 100 in Scott County in general. But there are more in Dakota and Washington. So with that in mind, the fact that it would also provide us more data on potential cyanogen, maybe some other nitrate testing as well. We went ahead and obviously joined that. So that's kind of been executed and is moving forward. Again, the process with that is, is that a letter is being sent out or sent out by MDH to those specific targeted residents, asking if they'd be willing to test. And if they do come in high, they can do a full replacement of their system or have pre-treatment done. So it's a pretty good deal to make some safe drinking water for those that may or may not test high. Plus it will give us some good information moving forward. Now, the bulk of the work is actually being managed by Dakota County because they have a pretty hefty, you know, well and groundwater treatment program. So they had a lot more foundation already available. So they're actually running the webpage slash website for all three of us and kind of helping with kind of the application process and everything. So it's, it's a pretty good deal for us. So we'll hopefully get a little bit of good data out of that as well. But where that's at now is that it is kind of up and running, so it's good to know. Um, a couple of things, the county again is working on a new, it's called an ERP system. It's a system where we do all of our accounting, our budgeting, our finance. And the county, the effort to replace that is a pretty big endeavor. So that's currently moving around and it might actually help us moving forward because a lot of the work we actually do is often just in Excel because the county's current system isn't, doesn't have the capacity to kind of handle the work that we do. It's not organized for that. So we're hoping that moving forward, we can do less in Excel and kind of more in a much more highly functional system. So that's nice to have. Um, just again, another update too with the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District MOA, which would allow us to implement and manage their rules through the county ordinances, kind of reduce duplicative permitting. Everything is, is pretty good on our end. We are just waiting a little bit on the district to be ready to tell us it's okay to sign that MOA. In the meantime, we are administering their rules overall. But, you know, we're still kind of checking in with them, probably a little bit more than we would normally once we have assigned MOA. But that is still, you know, moving forward as much as it can. And we kind of look forward to getting that one executed. Uh, speaking of ordinance updates, it is that season again. I know Megan put in a couple of small ordinance updates. I'm looking at a couple of small updates as well. One of them is to see if I can somehow figure out how to do a, an administrative permit for FEMA floodplain administration. So right now, our floodplain ordinance is very tight. It's modeled after FEMA's model ordinance through the DNR. A lot of things require a permit as usual. But some things, like if somebody comes in through one of our cost share programs and it also happens to be in the floodplain. Oftentimes, we don't have to do a permit because it's like the SWCD administering ordinances for us, for that resident. And they're making sure all the permit requirements are being met. Unfortunately, FEMA doesn't have that exception. So I'm kind of looking at seeing if I can maybe do an administrative permit moving forward to allow us to still be compliant with our FEMA ordinance and still kind of keep those things moving around without having to go through a more lengthy permit process for those. So those are kind of the, kind of bundled ordinance updates. We're looking at, the last one in that pile is we are also looking at coming up with a probably in lieu of, and after the fact permit for permit violations. Permit violations have kind of crept up considerably probably in the last five years. And we are spending a lot of time on permit violations and getting people to come in after the violation's been recognized. The problem is staff doesn't, you know, we don't make up the funding when somebody comes in after the fact for a permit. So staff places a considerable amount of time identifying the violation, reaching out to the homeowner, working with the homeowner. And then, once they come in for the violation and do the after the fact permit, it's pretty much, it, it doesn't cover all the costs and work we've done up through there up to that point. So we are looking at also moving forward with a kind of a violation permit as well. It'll, it'll be a bit more than the normal permit to kind of cover those additional costs. Um, the last kind of thing of interest is, that's kind of coming up right now, is that we have been having again more development in the floodplain. One of the bigger ones we're working on, or that has kind of come in with some questions, is actually in Spring Lake Township. And it's in kind of the Lydia area of Spring Lake Township, it's kind of like right on 13. What often happens with development is people come in and they look at stormwater, they look at a lot of the resources, they look at wetlands, and they often forget to turn on the floodplain layer. And unfortunately, once you turn on the floodplain layer, a lot of development is really no longer suitable for development. But unfortunately, people have also put a lot of time up to that point, thinking they can put development in those places. So Lydia's probably a very good example of that, where probably a lot of folks and developers have come in to this point, thinking this area is great for kind of an industrial commercial development. But unfortunately, the bulk of it is very heavily located in the floodplain. Ryan, can I share my screen actually? See if I can.
Yes, she'll be able to.
Perfect. So can you see my screen all right?
Now I can.
Perfect. Little delay there. So this area here is kind of the, the general area that currently developers are kind of looking at. And, you know, it looks pretty flat and probably pretty appealing. And it's right on 13, which is really nice. Unfortunately, when you turn on the floodplain layers, you'll notice that actually, by and large, the bulk of it is in the floodplain. And actually, County Dish 13 runs through here as well. So we're kind of trying to figure out the best way to kind of work through people learning more about the floodplain ordinances in advance. So they don't put too much time and effort into development that might not go the way they are looking at. Plus, especially with the potential abandonment of 13 in the next few years, if it should, that, that should occur, this area would obviously become an even wetter area as it stands. So I'm just going to bring that to you now, because these things do seem to be coming up more and more now. And we will look at maybe ways that we can kind of promote maybe what the floodplain ordinance is, as we kind of do with wetlands and things. Folks are better now at looking at wetlands, other properties prior to development and stormwater requirements, just getting them to kind of get that last piece of, hey, don't forget, there are often floodplains where you might not think there are floodplains. So that's kind of the last update I have right now, and I will stand for any questions.
Thanks Vanessa. Questions for Vanessa?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pent. A quick question, sorry to bother you about the details of this. But you showed me the map on 13 there. Can you tell me what that crossroad was on the north side or the top side of that map? Where are we about?
Where is that crossroad?
Yeah, I saw the crossroad on 13, but it, so we're south of that, obviously, what you're talking about. But I don't know what crossroad that is.
Oh, oh, it's, um, it's 10 or 205th Street?
10, okay, so that's, okay, so it's right there at Lydia, okay.
Oh yeah, it's kind of.
Blood plane that typically we think of blood plane down under Minnesota River Valley, et cetera. But this blood plane means that their natural outlet, right, is, is, there is no natural outlet to that area. So in a heavy rain event, there would be pooling of water right there, right? And there's no outlet.
Yeah, and County Dish 13 kind of hugs and weaves its way through kind of that general area. So by and large, probably for the last many years, it's probably a little bit more dependable as to how much it floods because it's a county ditch, right? It's maintained. Should County Dish 13 ever be abandoned, it would obviously revert back to a more natural state, which would increase those kind of fluctuations in, in County Dish 13 area. So exasperating and already floodplain issue.
Very, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Other questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to Ryan and his program updates.
Madam Chair, I think it's actually the SWCD update first.
Oops, I'm muted. Yep, sorry about that. Go ahead Troy.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Just reading a few highlights from the October report in your board packet. Service requests, these are a number of landowners in the Scott WMO that we're actively working with on the cost share program, whether it's technical assistance and or project related. You'll see for the month of October, we're right around 140 or so total landowners. And of that, close to 80 or more are actual projects that we're working on. Health and soil health cover crops, we continue to make a focus on that. We had a open house, cover crop open house at Jim Schringler's farm. That was back in September. That was done in conjunction with the Natural Resource Conservation Service. We have a partnership agreement with them for our next few years to focus on, on soil health practices. We coordinated our annual countywide aerial cover crop seeding. We did 405 acres with an winged airplane and 330 other acres with a helicopter. Each one has its advantages and disadvantages, so some landowners prefer one over the other. So we, we offer both options. We had 10 landowners that use our drill for no telling, and then another nine new requests for financial assistance. The Soil Health Practice graph there, you'll see a huge spike in 2024. This is really a result of our focus on this. And we've just seen a tremendous bump in the number of, the amount of interest we've had in soil health practices, we're well over 300 or 3,000 acres for the year covered within the tax program. This is countywide, but the vast majority of that is in the WMO. Equipment rental as well, we haven't even hit the late fall season yet. And we're up over 2,250 acres for 2024. So we'll see another jump in that after November here with additional seeding being done late, late in the year. Cost share funds, so this is the snapshot of where we're at with the amount of cost share we have. We have 1.25, close to 1.25 million in awards. We've uncovered over a million of that, and so we're sitting on about 217,000. Ryan will talk later about grant application for WBF funds. And so that will replenish significantly here in the near future. But we're getting down there, and that's good. We've made a concerted effort to get these funds out, out of the door. And it's been our prime focus over the last year or two, and that's helped whittle that number down. Clean Water Education Program, we hosted outdoor education days. We had 1,000 students from 14 different schools participate. We completed translation services on a number of MS4 educational materials. This is a, kind of a new metric that's required of communities that have their MS4 permits or MPDS permits, where that material that's available is available in different languages. And we're starting to work on that. And thanks to the county, they have somebody at the county that we work with to help translate into materials into Spanish. So we appreciate that help. Uh, let's see, I'll move down to the water quality monitoring. So we continue to do our, our bi-weekly sampling on the main monitoring sites on the creek. And also did the monthly synoptic reading. That's where we go out to 38 different sites and collect data all on the same day. We also collect 10 flows. Now, since we had little, to, to no precipitation, a lot of the streams are low. And we actually had to take a number of readings at those low levels because the goal is to collect the flow gauge data at different stages of that stream flow. And we had a lot of high flows because of the wet spring. So we needed to get some low ones, and that's what we were able to do later in the season here. And for groundwater observation wells, we completed our data collection on all 19 wells for the first quarter. So we hit each well throughout the county four times a year. So their first quarter is done. Precipitation comes as no surprise. You can see for the month of September, it barely shows up as any precipitation. So well below normal after a couple of months of it being above. And I'll skip down further, Ryan, to inventory and assessment. So we continue to refine our inputs and develop our Raven Phase 2 sub watershed assessment. We're finalizing the, the model run, which has been completed. We're just doing the QA QC and all the data. And then we'll head into preparing the final report for that one. And then we'll be able to deliver both Phase 1 and Phase 2 for Raven Stream here shortly. Scoot down Ryan, if you don't mind. I think that covers it on the narrative section. The final part of the report just lists all the new applications that were approved along with payments this past month. You'll see here, we've done more than a dozen application approvals totaling over $95,000 this past month. And then in payments would be the next part of that. We had, is there any more, Ryan? There we go, about a little over, almost $36,000 in, in payments that were issued this past month. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you Troy. Questions for Troy?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pent. A quick question for Troy. You reported again that you did your 19 wells monitoring again for the quarter, et cetera. I'm assuming that the data that you're collecting is falling within the normal range of bounce back, et cetera. Therefore, there's no issue. Is that a fair assumption?
I think it's a fair assumption, but I can't speak to it. I, I don't have the data at my availability right now. But what I could do is put together a, a report that shows kind of where we're at and maybe include that in my next report to the board, a, a report on where we're at with these. We can do a year to date and maybe a 10-year average. So you can kind of see how things are trending, but I'd be happy to include that.
All right, thank you so much. I hate to put extra work on you, but I am very concerned that I want to make sure we're monitoring in case there's any issues that we, I want to be ahead of the curve and not find out after the fact if we have an issue. So appreciate you. Thanks Troy.
No extra work at all. Happy to do it, and then it makes a lot of sense. In fact, the Soil and Water Board asked for the same, the same question. So we're going to put that together and share it out.
All right, thanks.
You bet.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, Troy, if you wouldn't mind, just at the last meeting, Commissioner Pent had a question about the Helena Wetland Bank. If you wouldn't mind just giving kind of a brief update of where things are at. I, I did my best to tell them that you're embarking upon the five-year mark with Bowser and finalizing the acreage. Commissioner Pent also was wanting to know what the long-term plans were.
Yeah, good question. So Ryan, you're right, we, we're bumping up against the end of our five-year monitoring period. We had our consultants do the final wetland delineation on the site. It turns out we had a couple more acres than what we had projected, which we projected a little conservatively, not being sure exactly how many would restore. But it restored well. So we have approximately 48 to 49 acres of wetland. In addition to that, we have approximately 37 acres of upland buffer and habitat area surrounding that. So a total of about 82 acres to 85 acres total of, of restored area. The, the final release of credits will happen within the next couple of months. So we were waiting to get this final delineation report. Then we submit that to Bowser and the Army Corps. And then they approve the final, final release of credits. As far as future management of the property, we haven't really made any decisions on that yet. We were really, over the past five years, focused on, on meeting our benchmarks and our performance standards on the restoration part of it. So I would think within the, you know, early next year to mid next year, we'll be maybe diving into deciding exactly what, how we want to manage or what we want to do long-term with the land itself. For now, it'll just be under our ownership. We'll continue to imagine, manage it as we have, making sure there's all the noxious and invasive weeds are controlled. Try to control woody vegetation and also manage the outlet structure to make sure that it's in proper functioning order.
Thank you Troy.
Okay, now we can move on to Ryan with his program updates.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, good afternoon. So I actually don't have a lot of updates because they're embedded in some of the other agenda items. So be able to go through this pretty quickly. Updates in our CIPs, so we did make the final payment for our Phase 6 Stream Bank project. That was approved by our board on October 15th. So that project is all wrapped up now, nothing more to, to do on that one. The Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization Project has kept us busy here in the last few months. It's, it was out to bid as of this morning. So we had our, our bid letting at 10 AM this morning. And I'll dive into more of that in the, the nine elements agenda item. And I'll let you know who had the lowest bid and kind of where things sit with that. Now, we also held a pre-bid meeting onsite on October 11th, where contractors were able to walk the site. Had probably roughly 10 different firms there. So it was probably one of the more well-attended pre-bid meetings. And a few folks also let me know they wouldn't be able to make it. And they did, they're not really supposed to, but they did go out at other times to, to look at the site. So we're planning for mid-November for start construction and wrap up in, into February. So that one's kind of at an exciting spot, where we're going to be getting going with the construction soon. Now, we are starting to work on the docket revisions for 2025. So you will see those at the November meeting. There's not a lot of major changes. Did want to make note that Commissioner Schmidt did have a good suggestion regarding residue management in that if you want to continue, let's say you do a contract and then you want to do another contract, they'd have to maintain your existing acreage to be eligible for any applying of new funds for different fields or new fields, similar to cover crops, how that works. So that will be, we made that change in there, so you will see that when it comes to you in November. Two more items, had maintenance activities occur at Corey Creek and Blakely Trail, where they did some touch-up work. That work was completed by our Public Works Department. They did a great job on it, and it didn't take too much of a, an effort to. It wasn't, it wasn't big, any of the issues that had happened. So that's all complete. And last thing, our macro inverte samples were dropped off at the lab for the 2024 season. So we usually get the results maybe February, March timeframe is when we get those back. So then we'll put together a report and put that online when those become available. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you Ryan. Questions for Ryan? Okay, on to Melissa. Is she on? Yeah, there you are. Yeah. All right, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. So I've been working with different lakes to try to get their individual input so that we have some informed information for the Watership Plan Update. So for O'Dowd and Thole, I'm working with them together. I've been preparing a, preparing for a lake resident public meeting to discuss the future management of O'Dowd and Thole Lakes. There are some wants that some of the residents have. So that meeting is tomorrow night. So myself and actually Megan will be at that meeting. I'll be presenting on like shallow lake ecology basics, the current state of the lakes, such as the water quality, vegetation management that we do. And then I'll discuss what we do for current management actions. And then the Lake Association will be sending out a survey. So we created a survey together, about 10 questions. They'll be sending that to the residents after the meeting to kind of get some input from the residents individually on kind of what they're looking for, for the future, for their lake. So that'll help inform the Watership Plan Update. And then I'll provide those responses to you, probably at the January meeting because I think our November meeting agenda is going to be pretty full. Doing the same thing with Cedar Lake, working with the Cedar Lake Board to develop the same survey. I've got the same questions, but I'm going to be meeting with them next week to go over those, to see if they want any changes. So the input from the Cedar Lake residents will help direct the Cedar Lake Total Maximum Daily Load Implementation Plan that we're going to be updating. So next year, we're going to be working with BAR to update the model for that with the new data and information that we have. That model is going to be updated through Watership Base Implementation Funds. And so that'll help inform management strategies into that implementation plan. So I'll be meeting with the board at their board meeting on November 4th to go over the draft survey questions. And then we're going to be mailing out a postcard to all the residents in the Lake Improvement District, which is approximately 465 parcels. That'll include the survey link. And it'll also be posted on their website, and they'll have until December 13th to fill out that survey. And then the plan is for me to attend the, the Lids Annual Membership Meeting in April to present the results and next steps to those residents. I did reach out to McMahon Lake, a couple of my key contacts there to see if they would like the same thing. And I did get one response back saying that, yes, they would have an interest in, you know, doing a similar survey. So I will put something together for them and, and reach out to those residents. I did attend this morning, the Minnesota Forest Control Agency's Watershed Restoration and Protection Strategy meeting. It was kind of an update on the approved sites and some more detail on applying for a SWAG grant, a surface water assessment grant to be able to do some, oh, sorry, can I share my screen, Ryan?
Yes, should be able to now.
So the grant is if you made a request and the PCA isn't considering it a core site, the, the PCA went through each request and determined whether they thought it was a priority. And some priority. And some parameters, they approved, and some parameters, they didn't. They they said that they're deferring them. So what that means is, so here is the map showing all the different requests that were submitted. So I'm going to turn off that layer, and I'm going to turn on this layer. So these blue circles are what the PCA considers core sites. So they, the PCA will monitor these, and they will pay for that monitoring, and they will staff that monitoring. So there's six core sites in Scott County. The biological sites. You don't want to show up. Here we go. There are thirteen biological sites that MPC will monitor for macros and fish. Some sites might not be fish and just macros. But I just wanted to show where all of those are. So a lot of them are in the Scott WMO. There's a few in, one in Lowerman, one in I think that's still Lowerman, isn't it? There's a paralegal to Lowerman. And then one on Credit River, so we will it's good for us to know where those are so that we aren't duplicating our sampling on the macro program with that. There was a request that I made. So I'm going to turn that off, and I'm going to go back here. So this request that I made here, the PCA is going to do. So they did, well, I'm sorry, they approved it, so which means they approved certain parameters for it, so they're not going to sample it, but we could apply for a SWAG grant for those approved parameters. What I also found a little interesting is that, sorry, I'm going to move back over here. So this is Robert Creek. You know, we already have a some watershed assessment, a plan to improve Roberts Creek. This was a request made by an outside agency, but the PCA is going to they created a core site out of it, so the PCA is going to monitor it and pay for that monitoring. So we don't have to decide who is going to apply for a SWAG grant on that site. This isn't typically the location that we monitor Robert Creek. Typically, our location is further downstream. So we might have more discussion on that. There are other sites that it might be worth, if we decide to go for a SWAG grant, to, you know, to work with the SWCD on that and have them apply for it, because it does include basically all the expenses that you would need to monitor, so that it was pretty detailed on what it covers.
Melissa, I might just jump in here, Madam Chair Commissioners. Just a reminder that we utilize these SWAG grants and MPC monitoring to offset our own local costs, because obviously if PCA will monitor it, then we don't have to contribute the Scott WMO levy to monitoring it. And especially for sites that we would like to have monitored, right? And then if we get a SWAG grant, again, the cost of the grant offsets our local levy so that we don't have to use local tax dollars to pay for that monitoring as well. It means we can focus those tax dollars on other monitoring sites or save them for other projects, but we can still get the monitoring done that we want to get done. The downside is, is that if this new lower Minnesota River East watershed entity is now creating monitoring sites within the Scott WMO, it takes away or potentially can take away from us being able to get PCA's assistance with monitoring, because now they're allocating their resources elsewhere. So obviously, that's when Melissa said there's some additional conversation that needs to be had. These are conversations that we keep trying to have and haven't been particularly successful so far. We're not sure why this other new entity is doing work in our watershed. And we are concerned that obviously there's really no point to this site being monitored. So yes, it is true that PCA agreed to make it one of their new core sites, but does that mean they would they're not going to choose another core site that maybe we actually needed monitored in the WMO? Does it mean that they couldn't have used that money elsewhere for something else? It's still tax dollars, whether it comes from the WMO or elsewhere. And of course, the data they collect, what's going to be done with it, because we're not going to use it, but we're the really the only entity with jurisdiction to do anything there, so these are kind of conversations we need to now have, because there's this new entity that doesn't really probably need to be here, but is here nonetheless, and we have to figure out how to move forward. So this is probably one of the first of many conundrums we will be running into moving forward. Thankfully, this year it was just one monitoring site, not many, and so hopefully we'll be able to keep working through it moving forward, so adding just a little bit on top of Melissa, I know what you were already getting covering there, so.
Yeah, no, that was good. Thank you. That's all I had at the moment.
Questions for Melissa on her updates? All right, and then on to your plan update, Melissa?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether that was on there, but I just wanted to say that I'm still working on summarizing all the Phase One issues and concerns data. I will present that at the November meeting.
Okay. I lost my agenda again, so I apologize. Can we scroll back to the top?
Sure, Ray.
Thanks, Ryan. All right, fish survey. Go ahead, Sean.
Then, Madam Chair, I can start off and actually introduce Sean. Let me get back to my notes. Sorry, Sean, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Oh, no, it's all good. Thanks, Ryan.
There's a couple of points of emphasis here that I wanted to make. So Sean, and actually, when I created this memo, didn't know that Peter would be joining us as well, so Sean Gibbs from Mount Hood Environmental, and then Peter Hunt with the University of Minnesota, completed all the work for us this year on our second round for our fish survey efforts on Saint Creek. And they will give you a little presentation here and kind of highlight some of the items that they that they completed for us, and some of them are, especially like the EDNA is pretty cool, so with that, I will turn it over to Sean and Peter.
Awesome. Thanks, Ryan.
You're welcome.
I'll go ahead and share my screen here. You're saying you don't see them in presentation mode, is that correct?
We're looking at it like as if you're creating the PowerPoint. I think it's F five, I thought was, but it's also down at the bottom.
I know, I'm losing my cursor.
I thought it was, yeah, it's one of those where you got your cursor. It's one of those.
Yeah, well. Already. Well, thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for the introduction. Yeah, like he like he mentioned, my name is Sean Gibbs. I'm a senior scientist. I'm joined by Peter Hunt, who's also working with Mount Hood Environmental on this project behalf of the county. We do a lot of, we're a small research-based company based out of the Pacific Northwest, and Peter and I are kind of working on operating out of the Midwest office out of the Twin Cities up here, so. We do a lot of work with researching fish, aquatic invertebrates, amphibians. We also do a lot of water quality and toxicology work. But today I'm going to be talking about the the some of the work we're doing with fishes in the Sand Creek watershed. And I'm going to start, I'll try, I know it's Monday, and I know it's getting later in the afternoon, I'll try to I'll try to move through this quickly for everybody. But I do want to include just a bit of background history. A lot of what I'm going to be talking about today is going to be focused on the dam that creates the falls over in the city of Jordan by by Mill Pond there. And you can see in this picture from eighteen eighty-eight, a picture of it over from the railroad track perspective. But the dam was actually built back in in eighteen sixty, so we're going on almost a hundred and sixty-five years of it being in existence, and I'm sure some of you are probably aware that for the majority of those years, the dam has functioned as a complete barrier to upstream migration by fishes, so we would expect a lot of various fish species to be migrating from the Minnesota River up into Sand Creek and probably throughout the watershed. But the dam has, for much of its existence, prevented them from passing further upstream. And interestingly enough, there, the Minnesota Game and Fish Commission, which would have been essentially the precursor to the Minnesota DNR, received so many complaints from residents of of New Prague back in the early nineteen hundreds that they that the residents were no longer seeing returns of fishes during the spring up towards the city that they had once seen before the dam was constructed, and so they were, they requested that fish passage be installed, and so the Fish and Game Commission ordered installation of of fish passage back in nineteen oh six, and for about fifty years or so, there was fish passage at the dam, and we know that some fish were at least using it up until nineteen sixty, when a major flood had destroyed the fish ladder. And that kind of sets, I guess, the scene for for the work that we're doing here. And the overall objective of of this project, it's kind of a multi-year effort here, is that is to basically quantify the impacts of the dam on fish assemblages upstream of the dam. And specifically, we're interested in kind of two groups of fishes, primarily game fishes, so these would be species that would be targeted by recreational anglers. And I'll show a couple of pictures as examples in a minute here, but also sensitive species or intolerant species that might be good indicators of water quality or available habitat. As a secondary objective, we're also interested in freshwater mussels. I'm sure some of you are probably very familiar with the fact that the nearly all freshwater mussel species require a fish host in order to complete their reproductive cycle. And so what that basically translates to is factors that influence fish populations and their distributions also have a really strong impact on freshwater mussels. So we would expect a fish bass passage barrier to also impact the distribution of those mussels throughout the watershed. And why that's also important is because, of course, some of you probably are very aware that freshwater mussels have a lot of ecosystem benefits, including the ability to improve water quality and water clarity, so. As just a brief overview of of the timeline for this work, we began conducting work last year in twenty twenty-three, doing kind of a targeted fish survey, located in close proximity to the dam. And this year, I would say there's kind of two phases to the work that we did. There's the data collection phase, which occurred in the summer, and a habitat analysis that was conducted earlier in the spring that was used to inform the location for the data's collection effort. I'll circle back to this timeline here towards the end of the presentation, but I'm going to really just go through these three elements rather quickly for you all here. So going back to the fish survey of last year, I mentioned we did some targeted sampling in close proximity to the dam, so here we're just zooming in right there into Jordan. The dam is indicated by that little red rectangle. Sand Creek is the blue line, and then the sampling locations indicated by green and orange. And this was more of a conventional fishery sampling approach, so we were using nets and electrofishing at those sites, and just kind of go through some of the few pictures of some game species here. So here we have one of our technicians that was working with us, Ken Rick, holding a northern pike. These are all going to be fish. I'm not going to show all the different fish we got. Ryan knows that would take forever. But I'll highlight a few here that were caught right below the dam. So this is a northern pike, a popular game species. Of course, our state fish here, the walleye. And sunfish, this is an orange-spotted sunfish, but also, so these would be examples of game species, but also some of the lesser-known species of fish that aren't encountered often by recreational anglers, such as this stone cat here, which is like a very small species of catfish. Or this slender-headed darter, which is actually a close relative to walleye and perch. And these would be examples of more sensitive and intolerant species. And just to highlight on a on a more complete level here, all the different species we observed here during that initial sampling, looking at on the X axes. And then their relative abundance on the Y axes indicated by the height of these bars. And so what we observed was about three times as many species downstream of the dam as compared to upstream of the dam. We also observed a lot more sensitive and intolerant species downstream of the dam. But really, this was just a snapshot in time and a very discreet spatial extent, and so we can make very broad assumptions about about the watershed as a whole, using this approach. It's also very time an approach that requires a lot of of effort to to collect this type of data. And so this year, we transitioned to more of a watershed-level approach. And a few different kind of key components of that that I'm going to talk about. We had a that habitat desktop analysis that we wanted to use existing data to kind of inform the locations at which we would be sampling. And the two different types of, or the two things we collected were EDNA samples, which I'll provide a little bit more information here in a second, but essentially it's it's an approach at collecting presence-absence data for fish and mussels, and then habitat data. So just some of those metrics as an example would be like temperature, discharge, channel width, and depth. And really, in order to answer our 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 primary questions, we're going to combine these two things. We're going to combine presence-absence data with habitat at those locations in order to understand how is both how is the dam affecting the distribution of fishes and mussels throughout the watershed, but also how are the individual habitat that are present within the channel also impacting the distribution of those fishes in order to arrive at a a final basically answer to our question, so. And so as far as the initial habitat analysis that we did, it was utilizing two different data sets, a hydrological data set from the USGS, as well as the National Land Cover data set from USGS. And the reason we wanted to use this approach, again, we wanted to be able to if we just randomly sampled, there's throughout the watershed without kind of trying to inform those sampling locations, there would be a pretty good chance that we would miss specific habitat types, or perhaps inadvertently have kind of a biased set of data at at the conclusion of the study, and so we know that habitat within a stream can often be pretty closely associated with the surrounding land use, so of course, like a stream passing through a forested area would be more likely to have, for example, like more large Of course, like a stream passing through a forested area, um, would be more likely to have, for example, like more la- large wood and in, in its stream, probably more complex habitat. Than, um, uh, for example, a stream passing through, uh, agricultural area where, uh, perhaps there's less wood and more channelized, um, sections of stream, so. So we use this, uh, geospatial data to conduct a cluster analysis, um. To kind of give us a starting point, um, and. Basically, this is kind of a visualization of that, so what, what it did is it broke all of the, um, all of Sand Creek and its major tributaries into. Different habitat types, more or less, so we have forested habitat or forested sections. In green, wetland sections in, uh, blue, developed sections in red, and agricultural sections in orange. And then, um, so we wanted to place our sampling locations for the data collection, um, component of our study. Throughout the watershed, but also ma- we wanted to be sure that we're placing them in, um. These various, uh, habitat types, so. We can make comparisons of the fish assemblages located in forested sections upstream of the dam. And compare that to, uh, the fish assemblages that we observe in forested sections downstream of the dam, and, um, so on and so forth. And so, once we had, uh, identified the sites, we collected EDNA, this is a picture of our, our setup here, but as you can probably guess, this is not Sand Creek. Uh, so, uh, this is just, um, more or less to get a, uh, be able to show you a visualization. But EDNA is a pretty, it's a pretty neat technology, uh, that's, um. Becoming more and more utilized by agencies and researchers, basically throughout the country, um. And what we have here is, uh, a backpack unit created by, uh, Smith Root. And it's essentially a, a little computer attached to, uh, of, uh, very sensitive water pump. And what it does is it draws water up from, uh, in this case, Sand Creek, um, through filters. And this is kind of a zoomed in picture here, can you guys see my cursor? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Awesome, thanks, uh. This is a kind of zoomed in, uh, picture of one of the filters that would be attached to the setup. So at the end here, we'd have, um, two or three filters, collecting, drawing water up from the stream, filtering out DNA. And then what we can do is we can send those filters to a laboratory that can analyze it and tell us which fish and muscle species are present within those samples. And, um, there's a lot of, um, pros and cons to the, the various, uh, approaches to collecting fish data. Um, but one of the, um, major benefits of EDNA sampling is that, um, if we were to go through. And collect, uh, fish in a more conventional approach using nets or traps or, uh, electrofishing. We could maybe do one or two sites in a day, um. And with EDNA, um, you know, we can, we can easily, we can do a single site in about fifteen minutes, um. Just collecting the samples itself, so, um, from a, um, a cost benefit, uh, perspective, it is, it is very cost effective, so. Um, a little summary of the data that we collected, so we did visit twenty-one sites, um. One of the sites in, eh, in Pika Creek, uh, actually didn't have enough water to, to collect samples or collect any data, so we, uh, collected. EDNA samples from, and habitat data from twenty sites, uh, which included forty-eight EDNA samples. Um, so some of the sites we ended up, uh, collecting, uh, addition, extra EDNA samples from what we kind of, uh, anticipated at the start. And then, at eight of the sites, we installed a temperature probe to monitor temperature continuously, uh, from here on out, and we also, um. Uh, recorded discharge. As well at those same eight sites. And I'm not going to bore you guys with a bunch of details from, from the data, because again, we're gonna, we're gonna pair the habitat data with the fish data and the muscle data at the end. But I do just want to give you a visualization of some of the data that we are collecting. And so I'll, I'll throw, uh, I'll show you a couple of figures here, they all kind of follow the same, uh, structure, we have. Our sites, uh, indicated along the bottom here, uh, so twenty sites. And, uh, each one was associated with one of the, um, box and whisker plots here. We have Sand Creek sites on the left side of the figure, and then the tributary sites on the right-hand side. We have sites located downstream of the dam in blue, and sites upstream of the dam in red. And then we have various habitat data that I'll kind of cycle through here, so in this case, we have depths recorded. At the sites at which we collected our samples, channel width. We have, we recorded bank erosion, um, on the top here, um, percent cover in the middle plots, and then shade on the bottom plots. Um, we recorded, um, discrete measurements of temperature and dissolved oxygen, so temperature on the top and dissolved oxygen on the bottom. And then, um, kind of cycling back to the timeline here, so that carries us through twenty twenty-four. We're going to expect to have our EDNA samples analyzed by the lab and have those results hopefully under the next work order, um, this upcoming winter. We'll use those to inform an additional round of EDNA and habitat data collection. Uh, in the spring or summer of twenty twenty-five. And eventually work towards hopefully having a large enough sample size to be able to conduct a, um, um. Occupancy probability, uh, analysis and, uh, finish up our reporting, uh, hopefully in twenty twenty-six, so. And that was everything, and, uh, with that, I'll take any questions, um. Thanks again, so.
Nice job, Sean.
Well, so.
How accurate is that EDNA sampling?
Yeah, so that's a excellent question, and it's one that does not have, um, a. Very easy answer, um. There is, um. For some species, species that might be less, um. That might be more rare than other species, is actually tends to be more accurate than like conventional, uh, sampling techniques for being able to detect those species than. Perhaps electrofishing or things like that, but there is basically this unknown level of, uh, uncertainty associated with the data. And that's where the analysis comes in at the end, so, uh, basically if we, if we're able to feed in enough data, enough samples and associated habitat. With that, the cool thing about the, the model that we're going to end up building, it's the same kind of model that's being used, uh, by state agencies like. The one in Washington, um, or by WDFW in Washington. Um, to do the same kind of approach, and it's, it's called an occupancy probability model, and it, it'll basically. Provide you with estimates of uncertainty for each of the species, um, and so. It's, it's something that we don't know right now, um. I've used this approach, these kinds of models in the past, and it's, it's actually really informative and really cool, and. Has been really accurate for some of the muscles that we've worked with, and, um, but as far as like. The, uh, quantifying how accurate it is, that's something we won't have those answers until we start, uh, in on the analysis, and it starts to consider. All the different, uh, what positive detections or lack of positive detections, uh, at a given site across all its replicates, it can. Will arrive at those estimates at the end, more or less, so.
Just one more follow-up question to that, um, is this a methodology that's. Recognized and accepted by like the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency who makes those decisions on impaired waters, because right now we have a lot of. Reaches and streams that, um, are listed for fish and macro IBIs, so.
Yeah, no, that's a really interesting, uh, question. And, so I'm sure you might be aware, MPC, um, with their surveys, they're primarily, um, would be working with more conventional approaches like. Um, electrofishing for their surveys, and so, I, I can't, I certainly couldn't speak for the agency as far as like, uh, whether or not they would, um. Uh, lend the same level of credibility to this as their approaches. Um, but from a fish biologist's perspective, I can say, um, eh, this is becoming. One of the more, um, utilized approaches. Uh, even when it comes to, um, endangered species and things like that, um, as far as, uh, presence-absence data goes, so. Um, it is something that, uh, you always just have to be. And this is where the modeling kind, comes into play, is that we just always have to be able to. Try to quantify our uncertainty and have that be part of the conversation when, when arriving at any kind of decision-making, so. Um, but as far as the scientific community, uh, out, eh, on a broader level, it is, yes, more and more, uh, becoming a. A widely utilized, um, approach, so. And like I mentioned, like for instance, in Washington, um, their, their state department is actually, um, transitioning almost exclusively towards this to be able to. Describe fish assemblages throughout the watershed, so.
Well, it'd be a nice comparison to see with PCA when they're doing their modeling for the next two years to compare this. And it, it, hopefully it'll help us make a case for some de-listings, too.
Yeah, um, I also didn't, uh, mention it, but I'll, I'll circle back to it real quick. We also, when deciding where to place our sites, we also did try to align that with sites where back in the early two thousands and late nineties, MPC did collect data. So that, um, if we do, once we do have those lists of species that we observe there, we can kind of compare that to, um, some of the older MPC data that. Um, can't necessarily rely on, but it'll give us a pretty good gauge as far as whether or not we're capturing, um, all of the species and.
Thanks, that's all I had.
So my curiosity kind of aligns with Melissa's. Is it, is EDNA just as commonly used in creeks and wetlands and lakes, or is there one that it's? Used more often or preferred more often or favored more often?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I can necessarily speak to, uh, it on such a broad level, I know, um. In all of those environments, whether Atlantic or Loic, uh, it is something that researchers are, um. Incorporating more and more, so, um, it is still on the, uh. It's not a new technology per se, it's been around for, uh, several decades, but as far as its utility, its utility is really coming in. Um, to play more and more as the modeling has kind of caught up to account for. Uh, and, and allow us to quantify the uncertainty associated with the approach itself, so, um. I know, and I could, um. I could even give like some examples of numerous studies that use this approach within like streams to kind of, um, with. Basically the same kind of thing that we're trying to do here within streams to describe how assemblages change through, um, the watershed, but. You could, I would say it's probably a little, my, my gut is, uh, that is probably a little more widely used in streams. Than in, uh, Atlantic environments, just given like the complexities associated with sampling there. But I do know that, um. I, I want to say it's the Minnesota DNR, working, it might be in collaboration with the. US Fish and Wildlife Service, but I could be wrong on that, uh, they're exploring right now. And they're conducting, uh, initial studies to compare. EDNA results within lakes to the Minnesota DNR Lake Survey data sets. And I've seen some of their initial presentations on that, and, um, and it's pretty, it's, it's pretty impressive how, um. It's from a presence-absence perspective, how, um, how, how good they're, they're getting it, or, or lack of a better way of saying it, so.
Yeah, you compare this with a fish finder, set yourself up with like, you know, one of those, sorry.
Yeah.
Set yourself up with something very lucrative there, um. Very fascinating.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty cool, um, but the mo- again, the modeling side of it's really, um. That's where the really cool stuff, in my opinion, comes in, so.
Any other questions for Sean? I have kind of a broader question, um, maybe more for our, um, staff. Do we plan to make any comparison to maybe, um, um, records of what's in the Minnesota River and? Kind of make any assumptions about. Whether good or bad of what's coming upstream, you know, do fish like coming up Sand Creek, and, you know, anything like that, can we make any conclusions like that, or? It's not, not possible or not useful information.
Madam Chair, I, I mean, I, I think we certainly could, and, and we've talked about that, the relationship between the Minnesota River and Sand Creek. But I, we haven't made any decisions yet, um, you know, doing that sort of comparison, um. So yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good question, it's something we can certainly consider, I mean.
I was just curious, I, I saw a video about how they were testing in the Minnesota River and how it's. Improved so much, um, the, the variety of fish species over the past, you know, twenty years with all the work we've been doing, so. Like, oh, it'd be interesting to know, you know, how our numbers look compared to what they're seeing, but.
It would, it certainly, and, and I'm sure there's data out there for the Minnesota River, and we could do a comparison between. The river and what we're finding in Sand Creek and see if there are species that aren't coming up, you know?
There are established MPC sites on Minnesota River, and there will be. Resampling those, I think, three or four sites in the next cycle, so.
Okay, great, updated information.
And I only throw it out there, I mean, if, if it would be useful, if it's nothing other than, oh, that's interesting, then I don't know if it'd be worth anyone's time, so.
I, I think it'd be interesting to see, you know, what, which ones are utilizing the creek and which ones aren't, you know, there's.
Yeah.
The reason why some of them aren't, you know, and, and what would, what that might be, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Sean, appreciate you being on today.
My pleasure, thank you all.
I think we can move on to Megan and the Thol O'Dowd Elevation Survey. Megan, it looks like you're on mute.
I'd say the same thing.
Yes, I am, I apologize for that. Thank you, Madam Commissioner, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner, sorry, um, so just to, just to present this item as kind of information on our. Thol Lake outlet situation or current status of that, um. In your packet, there was a memo prepared with kind of a history of some of the outlet channel that is out there. Um, for those of you who are not aware, Thol Lake has a rather. Ill-defined outlet channel, um, that runs along the south side of Blue Bill Circle. Um, discharges from there, uh, through a culvert to the north, and then through a very, um. Low-managed system of ditches and wetlands and, and private drainage ways, um, eventually reaching the city of Shakopee and eventually Minnesota River. Um, we were approached by. Lakeshore residents a few months ago with some concerns about lakeshore levels, um, and as part of our WMO mission. Um, so we could help out with getting a survey done of the, the outlet ditch that runs along Blue Bill Circle on the south side. So Ryan, if you can scroll down just a little bit further, I think the exhibit was part of the packet, um, so yep. Um, so here is, is a nice little cross-section exhibit showing the spot elevations that were obtained by, um, WSB, who we hired to do the survey out there. Um, and we plotted those on a nice little cross-section here, kind of showing where the existing overflow is today, um. The OHW at nine forty-four point seven, um. And this kind of shows where that ditch does currently outflow. So this is kind of going to be presented tomorrow with Melissa at the, at the Lakeshore meeting, or the lake meeting. And we are presenting it here to you tonight first, um, and if you have any questions, please let me know. And we are presenting it here to you tonight first, um and if you have any questions, please let me know. So if you don't read these very often, Madam Chair Commissioners, um the OHW uh the top. Diagram is kind of outlined there in uh with it's uh it's listed there with the blue lettering, nine forty-four point seven. And then I those other measurements along those dashed and solid lines are those spot elevations. That were taken, so you can see that uh some of those spot elevations are certainly, some are a little bit higher, but some are certainly a bit lower. As well, um. A little bit, uh if you scroll down to the second image there. Um so this is kind of a bird's eye view, obviously, of the outlet channel area. So on the, if you want to imagine it, on the the right of this image is kind of the lake kind of. Kind of coming into that ditch area. Um and then it it kind of uh crosses under Bluebird there at the top. Where that kind of red dash line is, and that that's where uh the culvert is is located. Right now, now uh interestingly enough, uh looking into the history of this lake. There is actually a wetland a bit, I call it to the northwest, northeast, apologize. That actually has more impact on regulating that outlet channel than anything else. But uh water certainly flows through this culvert or doesn't flow through this culvert on a pretty regular basis. And um we got some informational history from the DNR on exactly how many permits have ever been pulled. On this, and there were two in their re- in their records, one was in the nineties uh from. A group of residents to replace that culvert, uh and then later the early. Um in two thousands, two thousand eleven, uh that was actually done by the township. Uh so the the culvert that's currently there was was uh last replaced by the township, so. Um obviously, again, you know, uh installing and managing outlets is not something the WMO does. Um or uh our priorities are water quality, uh lake health. Uh stream health, resource health, those kinds of things, um not necessarily the how how full the glass is. Because it is a natural resource and it will fluctuate, uh but we are certainly happy to provide data because that is one of our missions. Um so that was how kind of Megan helped us and assisted us with this, so. Uh if you have any questions relating to this data or things you think residents might ask. Uh now is a great time to bring those forward, uh because Megan's here. And uh she'll be bringing it to the residents tomorrow, so any thoughts you have are are obviously appreciated.
Yeah, I was guessing, uh uh I wonder what elevation we start hearing concerns. Do we know, is it when the road is overtopping or are there other or they're just saying kind of in general it's higher or?
Um uh the the Blue Bill Circle and and Marystown Road there aren't usually in any danger of overtopping. Um but uh with past history and notation our files, there's there's been complaints when it's too high. And there's been complaints when it's too low, um and the recent concern this year was too low. But it seems like people have, over the history of the lake, um concerns have been expressed in both directions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is a very flashy lake. I mean, it it's up, yep, sitting at the top of its watershed the way that it is, it's. Fascinating resource, um I'd like to learn more a lot, lot more about it, but um what we know so far is, yes, we there's. They it often is either very high or very low, and they come to us when there's both.
No, any other questions?
Commissioner Pent, just a a comment, just a few years ago, when the water was too high and we had. Problems with upstream from this area, we're flooding the backyard. And the problem was that the culvert area was becoming blocked with cattails. So I mean, it became very controversial, but we did, I believe, at that point, agree that they could clean out. The cattails to allow the nine forty-two point seven eight culvert to drain appropriately, so. It's interesting that it's either too high, like you said, or too low, so.
I thought I had remembered more going on here. Thank you for jogging my memory. Because I thought we had discussed this, and I I was thinking it was in more recent history, but you're right, it was a while ago, and they were going to do a clean out, weren't they?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pent, uh yes, we did look at that, uh the vegetation removal, we ultimately did not do anything. Um part of it was, there is another lake south of Thol and O'Dowd called Schneider Lake. And that's where we had residents that were upset by high water levels. But we came to find that it was, there's an old cattle pass on that county road, and I've drawn a blank of. Um of that county road, there'd be them the south end of of uh O'Dowd. Um but they cleaned that out, and that seemed to resolve um the issues that they were having, so it was actually um a culvert. Connecting O'Dowd and Schneider.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Right, looks like we can move on to the nine elements phase two, Pika Creek Ravine.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, so this is a little little bit of a hodgepodge, we don't usually do this, but. Uh some of the uh grant information uh came through a little close and tight. To our desire to apply it to the Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization, so we kind of had to hustle our. Our tuckuses and get this through to the board as well, so we're kind of uh bringing forward some information. That really evolved quickly over the last month. Uh so if you recall, uh. In twenty eighteen, the WMO submitted a letter of interest to participate in MPC's nine elements plan. Which kind of replaced the traditional section three nineteen grants, um kind of our two. The two backbones of grants that the WMO and most WMOs and watersheds use are either the section three nineteen grants. Through MPC or the Board of Water and Soil Resources Grants, those are now called the WBIF Grants, so. Section three nineteen grants kind of evolved into these nine element grants. Uh however, to uh be eligible for these new nine element grants, you had to put together a kind of a targeted plan. Uh and we did that, and our plan was actually approved back in twenty twenty. Um and so then that makes you eligible for about sixteen years of grants broken down into four sections. And the concept is, is if you uh implement the plan in those four sections over those sixteen years. You will have hopefully completed everything in that plan by the end of the sixteen years and um. The the resource will no longer be impaired. Obviously, it's a very lofty goal, uh nonetheless, we hope to get obviously much closer to achieving that goal through implementation of the plan. So uh the first uh section, the first phase of the nine elements plan, we literally just finished wrapping up. There were multiple, there are multiple activities in that one, it had some cost share projects, it had some work with the Cedar Lake Improvement District. Um it had a a group of of a nice resources and activities that we did. Uh the second phase actually just came through, it came through a little late, PCA had to wait a little while longer than they thought. Again, they had to wait for the EPA, so this one does talk back to the EPA, so things can take a little bit more time. Um as it turned out, uh when it came through, we were able to squeeze it in to apply it to the Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization. So that's the Sand Creek Phase. Oh, Ryan, is it four? I know these are out of order, it's four?
Uh no, uh this is phase five right now.
Five.
Completed six before five.
Xanadu is six, Pika's five, thank you. There, in the study, we named them. And even I still struggle keeping them in order, that's why I give them names like Pika and Xanadu and Dakini and things like that. Um so as it stands, uh this one just came in, although we do technically have four years. Implement this next uh phase of this grant and plan, we will obviously be executing it here within just the next few months. Uh the grant uh is a little, i- it's going to end up being overall a little bit smaller, but not by much. Uh the grant in this case is two eighty-nine, uh two hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh this grant does require forty percent match, uh so our local match will be a hundred ninety-three thousand and ninety-seven dollars. Which is a total uh project of four hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. So this phase, there's only one project instead of several, uh in this case, um. It's just the Pika Creek, so um as we hope to get it. And so I uh we are bringing this to the board, this is actually going to the board um to approve the lowest. Uh responsible bidder, actually, November fourth, uh so we're bringing it forward to the WPC. Because we would still like you to cut review it and make a recommendation of support that you would actually um suggest. That we do use these funds for this purpose and for this project and uh recommend the bidder that we are hoping to use. Keeping in mind, bid opening was this morning. We don't usually do things with such a quick timeline, but again, we are trying to get this used up as soon as possible, so. Timing is tight, but it is actually going to work out for us. Um and then if you could just scroll down just a little tiny bit, oh, a little little bit. Um and then just a reminder, through the grant, um the goal through installing the Peak Creek Rubine Stabilization Project. Or Sand Creek Phase Five, um would hopefully net us a reduction in phosphorus of four hundred and sixty-six point two pounds. Per year and sediment of similar amounts, uh so that's the actual project that we're bringing forward. For recommendation for the nine elements uh grant, and then the little kind of second half of this memo is. The bid opening, which as, at the time that this was written, we did actually know, so. I'll be turning this over to Ryan in just one second, um but then again, just a reminder, uh this grant, um. If we're, you know, moving it forward, would actually just offset construction costs for the Pika Creek uh Streambank Stabilization, which would mean it would reduce. How much fund balance we need uh for twenty twenty-five, current proposed fund balance usage is four hundred forty-four thousand, zero four two. That means we'd be able to reduce that by almost three-fourths, uh and that would help us a lot because we cannot. Continue to dip into our fund balance indefinitely, uh one of the reasons we can is because obviously we had saved up for this project. Um which would be helpful for us moving forward, so Ryan, if you could uh present to Madam Chair and the Commissioners. The bid information and what staff recommends is the lowest responsive bidder, and then we'll ask the Commissioners to. Uh make a recommendation for the work plan and uh winning bidder.
Yes, absolutely. And Chair Commissioners, so kind of an exciting day, you prepare for this project for years, I mean. When we did this feasibility study back in two thousand fifteen, we knew this project was going to be um a little bit more on the spendier. Side of things, and that's why it's uh the last one, we had to save up enough to to pay for it, so. Um the, we had four bids that we received, um and they ranged from our low bid. Uh which, right now, obviously, they have to go through all our paperwork and processes. Um to ensure that they can meet everything that we've got in our requirements, was for Vite and Company. And their bid was six hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh if you will recall, Vite is the one that just did our phase six uh stabilization. And uh I've probably mentioned it before, they actually did phase one, which was three different sites as well, so. Um they definitely have been the leader in terms of uh winning these bids, so this would mark the fifth project uh that they would complete with us, so. Um they did an excellent job on the last one, I'm not um thinking that they're going to run into any issues with the paperwork side of things. And meeting all the requirements, I sure hope not, since they did our last one. Uh so that would be kind of what we're looking for the uh WPC, if they are okay with um. You know, assuming that Vite meets all the requirements, if um they'd be all right with going with them, as the winning bid.
And Madam Chair Commissioner, I would also anecdotally add that I have noticed that when Ryan works with Vite. Um our bi-weekly updates or our monthly check-ins are are less stressful, he seems to be less stressed by Vite, so.
Yeah, Vite's been really good, so it was exciting to see them as the low bidder to them. Um and the other, I should just note, the other ones were K A Wick Construction, uh Minnesota Native Landscapes and Sun Ram Construction. Uh which, if you recall, three of those have actually done a project with us, Minnesota Native Landscapes did phase two. And Sun Ram did phase four.
That we were fortunate to get four bids of from actually all good companies, um.
Yes.
That was nice.
Out of curiosity, where the bids close?
Um so the winning bid was six hundred fifty-three, the next closest, I think, was around seven hundred and fifteen. And then the highest was over eight hundred thousand, so it was quite a bit of variation, you know, close to two hundred thousand. Um our last phase, it was kind of interesting because the engineers give us a uh high end and a low end. And uh it actually was exactly that, the bids, the low end was what the engineer provided as the low end and the high end was the high. This one's a little bit more variation than that.
Questions first? And if not, do we have a motion that to recommend that the board approve the work pa- plan and our proposed bidder from our staff?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pent, I would uh make a motion to recommend to the WMO board. That we accept the uh low bid for the nine element uh phase two project as defined by Ryan today.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
Um I'll do a roll, Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Bye.
And Commissioner Phil? Commissioner Phil? We may have lost him, he did let us know he may, oh.
Hi.
There he is, thank you, Commissioner Phil.
You're welcome.
All right, the motion is passed, um yeah, congratulations, you guys, this this is good news, exciting day, very cool. All right, next up, um AIS Prevention Plan Updates, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um as you know, every two years, we update the Aquatic Evasive Species Prevention Plan, this is just. Um continuing that update, um I listed what those updates are in the memo, if you've, if everyone had a chance to read that. They're very minor, basically just updating data um and the budget for the next two years. Um I'm still waiting for all the partners to uh respond to. Um if they, if there's anything else that they wanted updated in the plan. Um I did hear back from one saying they thought it was good, I'm still waiting to hear from Parleak Spring Lake, so they have until next week. Um and then depending on what they have, um I'm gonna be bringing this to the board sometime in December. So with that, if anybody has any questions, um. On the memo or the updates, or if you have something you'd want to suggest that we put in there, um I'm open to suggestions.
I assume if we don't hear back from Parleak Spring Lake, it's automatically approved as is or or our board, as long as they approve it, it moves forward?
Yes, because I did give them a timeline, um and I would like to comment back.
Okay. Questions? Okay, do we have a motion um that we recommend that the board approve the um Aquatic Evasive Species Prevention Plan? As presented?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll make that motion.
And do we have a second?
This Commissioner Phil, I'll second that.
I will do roll Commissioners. Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Right, we're getting there. Next up, twenty twenty-five W B I F Grant, Ryan.
Madam Chair Commissioners, so I'll make this one brief. This is just to give you kind of an update as to where things are at in terms of our next round of watershed-based implementation funding. And so if you'll remember, I think this is our fourth phase of it. It started in nineteen and it goes every two years. So we're still actually working on our twenty twenty-one W B I F. And then our twenty twenty-three W B I F was for our Xanadu C I P. So this one, actually, we have a few different activities and I listed them as the bullets on the the memo. So we are going to do some cost share in the Porter and Sand Creek Watersheds for our normal cost share program. A ditch multipurpose study in County Ditch Four. Cedar Lake Water Quality Model Update and then updating the Sand Creek Water Quality and Assessment Implementation Plan. Right now, where things are at is Bowser has approved the list. So there's you know, all the various different entities within Scott County are they went through this process where they identified their project. So that list with everyone on it has been approved. And now it's on us to basically generate our work plan. And so probably be looking at generating that work plan in November and then it would go and if approved, then we go through the process of executing the contract. And in total, these grant dollars would be three hundred and twenty-two thousand. And we are also assisting the City of New Prague on their city center stormwater improvement design. So that one, we're not leaving it, but it's still one that we're going to assist the city on. And with that, was there any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pin. Ryan, real quick again, County Road Ditch, does that service, is that part of the New Prei issue?
Oh, the city center stormwater improvement designs?
Yeah, you say you said a study on a county road ditch. Where is?
The studies on County Ditch Four. And that one Melissa is kind of the more lead on it. So I don't know, Melissa, if you want to chime in?
Yeah. Oh, did somebody else start to?
Oh, I did. I apologize. That was me. Go ahead.
No, so Commissioner Pin, this is actually in our watershed plan to kind of do a visioning study on a couple of different ditches in the county. We picked County Ditch Four because it's there's been talk that it could be abandoned at some point in time because it's the the use has changed over the years in Credit River Township, which is now Credit River City. So we thought we'd start with C D four. It's it's more of a kind of a visioning study to determine you know, what improvements we could make if it were abandoned in the future to make it improve water quality in in Credit River itself. So we'll look at best management practices. We'll do some modeling in the study. And we'll be working with the city and township. So I mean, I can provide you more detail if you'd like it, but we'll be given updates.
No, Melissa, that's great. I just I just couldn't remember where County Road Ditch was. So I appreciate you following up on that. I'm sure we'll hear more going forward. So thanks.
Yeah, so the 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 county, the multipurpose ditch studies are are kind of interesting to me specifically because I probably haven't really done these too much in the past. It's really only in the in these kind of urban fringe developing edge. I don't know how to explain it. In the inner, in the inner suburbs, you don't see as much ditch abandonment, right? You don't really see much changeover of ditches. Ditches have kind of found their final destination and then by the time things are more urban developed. So I think of them as being very interesting. I've never actually done one of these myself. I'm kind of looking at it as more of, like I said, kind of a sub watershed assessment and of how we would normally look at a reach of Sand Creek. Normally, we don't look at that for ditches because ditches themselves are a little bit more closely akin to managed stormwater infrastructure. So in that respect, we usually don't look at how to do a sub watershed assessment, obviously, in in a managed stormwater infrastructure. But when it's no longer a stormwater infrastructure, it becomes a little bit more back to its initial creek. And I will just add to that the county is actually pretty serious on abandoning four at this point. This was added to our plan many years ago and the county has actually probably moved forward a little bit faster on this one than the plan did. So in this case, they might get some of this information a little bit maybe later towards the abandonment. There are others that the Ditches Board has actually been looking at. Thirteen is another one that's on the list, maybe not as high as four. But that might be another one we might do a study for. And it just helps us as these resources turn over, right? They evolve kind of back into a natural creek reach as how we can best reduce pollutants and and manage them in the future. I Troy, I did see you had your hand raised. I know it was as a very active member of the Ditch Board as our ditch authority, did you have some more insight you could help us out with?
Yeah, no, I I just kind of build on what you were saying. I just had a quick update is the county did send out letters to all the County Ditch Four landowners about abandonment and basically it came along with a a piece of paper that says how they vote. Do they want to abandon or they they want to keep it as a county ditch? So there's a reply deadline, I think sometime in November on that. So we might know very soon whether or not abandonment will be pursued in the very near future here.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate that, Troy. So and you know, if you think about it, as a as a ditch, it's it's required to be, you know, cleaned, maintained, water has to flow through and all those good things. When it reverts back to being a reach or an unnamed creek, it does not, right? So it's going to start acting more like those resources do. It will flood the way that a more natural resources would flood if things clog or back up. There's there's no requirement for you know, cleaning out, making sure water flows anymore. And that could certainly affect the flood plane of the area. It can affect the hydrology of the area. So it's it's kind of a very fascinating thing for me to see that I don't get have got to see before. So that's my two cents anyway.
Commissioner, thank thanks for the clarification of that. I look forward to seeing more information on that County Road Ditch. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I believe this is just an info item, correct? So then we can move on to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pin. I move to adjourn.
We have a second.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
And I'll do roll Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
All right, have a good night, everybody.